All right, let's open the meeting. So just for people wondering about quorum, we can have a meeting without quorum. We just cannot vote and have a binding vote. With, I think, the practical exception of a journey. So, yeah, so we have a public warning meeting. We just can't have a binding vote. But since we, other than the consent agenda, since we do not have any actions that require a vote, that should not be a problem. So we will, we will proceed as needed, open up to public comment. Yeah, public comment is a very important part of our deliberation. It's to provide the board with constructive feedback from the community members about either items that we are currently considering on the agenda or either other items of concern that the community members may have. Unfortunately, we are not allowed to, well, our, our protocols do not have us respond in real time. That's as we, we take these very seriously and try to respond with fallout meetings. And oftentimes, the questions require us to ask things to the administration and do some research. I do want to say just a couple of things about the track proposal, which may be on several of your minds. We're going to hear from Andrew LaRosa later. I just want to clarify that that the track has not been substantively taken up by the board since the flooding of July 11. We have not, we've not considered the track in any substantive way. I think Kristin asked a question at the last meeting about the damage to the current track of Andrew LaRosa, which, as I recall, he answered that, as with most of our grounds, there was some minor damage that will require some repair. But that was not a question about the, the proposal that we approved quite a while ago now, like last fall, to renovate the track with a $1.8 million proposal that we have been updated on. Since then, that, that bids came in high, so we, as of the last substantive discussion we had, we asked that a rebidding occur this year, and it would be later in this year. I do want to say, and the board has not formally acted, but really consistent with discussions that I've been having with Libby. We understand the implications of the flood. We understand what it means, and we also understand the climate change models that show that we are likely to have more of these events in the future. And we need to be very mindful of that. As such, I think it is almost certain that we will delay the track project and probably any other major investments on the ground, other than what's needed to get kids safely into school and allow them to to have the education and the opportunities that they are expecting for this fall. And we will, I think, have a very broad and detailed discussion, as is the whole community, because unfortunately, it is not just the high school on the track that is in the floodplain, it is our entire downtown. About what that means and what sort of investments we need to make. And I think everything's on the table, and there's been a lot of ideas constructively put forth in the community, and we look forward to that discussion, but I don't think anyone on the board is thinking about or intent on pushing through any major infrastructure expenditure, including the track, without a thorough vetting of what the flooding means and whether we need to rethink that investment. Other investments, frankly, the location of the high school and the future of that facility. And that's a broad discussion with a lot of difficult questions and answers, and it requires a thoughtful conversation, and it also requires immense community participation and a lot of expertise and a lot of thought. So we are not again committed to pushing through the track as as we had approved prior to July 11. So I just want to get out ahead of that, because I'm sure there's a lot of questions around that. Since we have Jill on the phone, I am going to switch up the agenda and just do the consent agenda quickly, so Jill can rejoin her family on vacation. And so let's, let's do that, and then we'll go to public comment.
Policy monitoring as well, Jim?
Okay.
For approval. Sorry, Jill.
Yes, and thank you, Jill. We appreciate you hopping on. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Great. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Emma. All those in favor? Oh, any discussion? Great. All those in favor, please say aye. Well, actually, we have to do the roll call. We're back on Zoom. Lynn, yea or nay? You can give a thumbs up if you can't find your mute button or a thumbs down. Thumbs up? Okay. Jill?
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
And Emma?
Aye.
I will also vote aye because because of our short numbers. Do I have a motion to approve the policy monitoring report, A1, Board Conflict of Interest, and A20, Board Meetings, Agendas, and Preparation? Do you have a motion to approve those policy, two policy monitoring reports?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Great. Two seconds. Any discussion? Lynn, yea or nay? Yes? Okay. Jill?
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
And Emma?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. Thank you, Jill. Enjoy your vacation. You can stick around if you want to, but you look like you're in a beautiful spot, so I know what I'd do if I were in your shoes. Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you so much for calling in. We really appreciate you taking the time. Great. Thank you. Bye. So public comment, we're all on Zoom now, so what I'd like you to do is, if you wish to speak, is to raise your hand in the in the Zoom function, which is under, if you go to Reactions, there's a button that says Raise Hand. If you can't find that, you can just take yourself off camera and raise your hand physically. So anyone who'd like to speak, please do. Bridgette, please introduce yourself, and you've got the floor. And great to see you, by the way.
It's great to see all of you. My name's Bridgette Acey. I was until recently the parent of a high school student, but not anymore. And I just wanted to call in tonight because I wanted to express just so much appreciation for Libby and Andrew and the Clean Team and everybody at the high school who have been, and I know there are people whose names I don't know, have done so much work to get that school open again. I just know from my own son's experience that these are kids at the school now whose education has been interrupted once in a pretty dramatic way, and to not have them be able to go back to school this year would have been just another interruption for, for those students, and it's just really amazing. I cannot actually believe that the place has managed to recover so quickly. Also, I wanted to express appreciation for the superintendent's letter, the most recent letter to the community, which I think is just a great example of providing lots and lots of information so that people know what's going on and setting a really good tone for the discussions that are coming. And Jim, the same thing about your remarks just now, setting just a great tone for, unfortunately, the discussions that have to come over the next months and years as Montpelier figures out where to go from here. And lastly, I just want to thank everyone who's on the board who's taking this on, because that's yet another crisis to steer through, and I know that's a huge responsibility. So thanks. Great job. Much appreciated.
Great. Thank you, Bridgette. We appreciate it. Anyone else would like to speak? Paul, I see me came off cameras. Is that, do you want to speak or? Ah, great.
Or yes. I just wanted to, well, first, I appreciate your, your comments, Jim, that everything's on the table. And I wanted to sort of put it in the board's, bugging the board's ear that now's probably a good time to start thinking about forming a committee to investigate the possible merger of the high school with U32. I know it's been on and off the table many times, but we've never really had the motivation to, to follow through, and now, obviously, we do have that, that motivation. As you're probably aware, there have been a lot of comments on Front Porch Forum, a lot of questions. And there's going to need to be some time spent answering those questions and figuring out if it works for our community and the U32 schools. It won't be a quick process, but I would suggest that the committee that you and I, Jim, served on for the Roxbury-Montpelier merger might be a model for you to follow. For those who, of you who aren't familiar with it, included representative members of the school board, as well as citizens, received very strong support from the administration as far as gathering facts and information that the committee then could could try to digest. So it was a real group effort by several communities and several sectors of the community. So I hope you will put the topic on the agenda at the appropriate time. You know, certainly now's not the, the time, but probably sooner rather than later is better, because as you said, we don't want to invest a lot of capital into this building if we're going to be changing direction. Obviously, we want to keep it, keep the building functioning and supporting the students that are there, as you said. But at some point, we'll have to make a decision about what direction we're going to go in. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. And James?
Hello. I'll lower my hands so I don't forget. Thank you. I did first want to start off by echoing Bridgette's thank you to Libby, the board, all the efforts on behalf of the leadership to get the school ready, to support the school, the Clean Team. I can't even begin to imagine the amount of work they've done. And I would add also a thanks. Libby's note, I thought was, was so pitch perfect, as well as Jason's. Jason's letter from the principal, I thought was utterly fantastic. So thank you to all of the involved. I just wanted to weigh in on a, on a couple of those things. I've made in some notes, so I hopefully can do this quickly. That, while I know that there are changes, you know, in consideration and coming, my, I just want to put on, put some flags in the ground, I guess, going forward. First and foremost, a support for Montpelier to have its own high school. I think I, and I would I guess beg honestly, beg all voices involved. The, in the wake of the flood, the, the argument has very naturally been about physical logistics and dollars. I mean, while those are, of course, incredibly important and powerful considerations, when it comes to educating the children of Montpelier and an identity for them as a high school, and the size of the high school, and the quality of education, et cetera, there are factors that aren't physical location and aren't dollars that I would say in some cases are more important than the latter two. That, that I hope members of the community will keep on, you know, that we can keep in mind and continue to elevate as, as those discussions go forward. Next. I'm sorry, I'm just that the, the facilities for the students in the meantime, any change, I'm assuming, is going to be a relatively, relatively speaking, a long-term change. Which means we've got, I'm not even sure, what is it, four or 500 kids at MHS seeking an education, about 400 kids. I I, with respect to what Paul just said, I would hope that we can and I, I'm not suggesting, Paul, that you said it this way, but I think it could, some might have been suggesting it, I think, in this way, which is kind of a bare minimum of functioning while we figure things out. And I think our kids deserve more than that. And I fully, I recognize that this might mean throwing some money at a school where, you know, where changes down the road have to be made, but I think our kids deserve more than than a bare minimum, keep it functioning. And again, I hope the community, and including when it comes to the track, I forget the numbers, but my understanding is that when you add up the numbers of kids in the high school and the numbers of kids in the middle school, that we're dealing, we're talking about a pretty significant percentage of the students, and I think those, the opportunities of those students to express their athletic selves deserves more consideration than recent discussions have been allowing for in the, in the public forum. And then finally, and then I'll stop. I really, really, really hope that we as adults, and I'm not talking about the board or Libby, I'm talking about the rest of us, the citizens in the town, can figure out a productive and, you know, useful way to continue these conversations that is not front porch forum and that is not social media. Our kids are on those things, as Libby noted in her note, and, and speaking, you know, from I too in high school. And it's not that these, these kids don't deserve to be in the know on this stuff, but the, the, the temperature of the debate makes it all feel like right now. And, oh my God, and it's, you know, it's, there's, there's an urgency to it and a temperature to it that I don't think is good for our kids, and I don't think is fair to them. As Libby suggested, I think in your note, these kids deserve to go to school for however long it takes the community to make the decisions in a setting that is settled and that is firm and, and that says, from the community saying to these kids, we've got your back. Whatever's coming down the road, you go about your business, we've got you, and we're going to encase you in a settled and firm situation. And I think housing this debate in a continued manner as it's been going doesn't do that. It, it alerts our kids to too many firecrackers, I think, is, is best I can say it. So I hope we as a community can figure out a more subtle and structured way to have a very legitimate and open debate that doesn't expose the kids of the school to this ongoing pot of boiling water, I guess is how I'd put it. And with that, thank you very much, and I apologize if I went on too long.
No, thank you, James. We appreciate it. Anyone else? Otherwise, we can turn to the rest of our agenda. Great. Figure out who spoke, who spoke. Now, talking about being part of this discussion, we, unfortunately, Seiji Ohashi, fortunately for him, has started a new business, which is a pool hall in Berry. And apparently, pool halls in Berry often require the owners to be there on Wednesday nights. So he is no longer able to be in, be on the board, so he resigned a couple of weeks ago. We wish Seiji well in his new endeavor. He was, he was a great board member. We will miss him. We do have an open seat that we need to fill. And I actually forget the timeline on it now. I know, I know the announcement went out a bit. I think we might even be trying to fill it by our next meeting. We have gotten some community members who are extremely qualified, who are, are interested. But if that is something that interests you, please get a letter of interest and a little bit about your background to the board, and we will be moving forward that, with that expeditiously, because we really want this person to be part of the very important discussion that many of you touched on, and I touched on earlier, as well as we are in our cyclical budget season, pretty much starting at the year off, and it's really helpful to have a full board to do that. So I can't say it's a thrill a minute, but it certainly is great service, and it's a wonderful way to serve the community and our kids. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew LaRosa for an update on Montpelier High School, and I also just want to echo the sentiments of some of the community members who spoke, and that we echoed last time. It is really really been amazing and inspiring to see this, you know, the staff and Libby and Andrew and, and Tom and his custodial team. And I know I'm leaving a few names out, really pulled together. And they've been working pretty, pretty tirelessly. They have been, you know, in constant communication with the community, in constant communication with the board to get what was pretty, pretty significant flooding event at our high school cleaned up and under control, so that way our students on August 30th, which is right around the corner, will hopefully be able to, to return safely to a school that is going to be, my understanding is, more or less fully functioning. So Andrew, I will, I will turn it over to you and Libby to give an update on that.
Jim, I just have a quick question. Is there a deadline for, is there a deadline for letters of interest?
Libby, do you remember? I don't have the
You put it in for the next board meeting, that, that the board would make the choice.
Yeah, so I think I think as long as you get in before the next board meeting and there's the opportunity to, to circle around. And also, for people who are interested, we will give some time at that board meeting for you to introduce yourselves and tell us a little about your candidacy. I know at least one person who's on this call right now has, has, has already expressed interest. So you know, please feel free to, to come next time, and, and we'll hear from you in addition to your letter. And if, if you can't make it, we will equally consider you as well, too. It's being, being on that media is not a, not a prerequisite to be chosen.
Hey, and Jim, just for, for details sake, at the next meeting that we'll consider this is the September 6th meeting? So folks have a clear deadline? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'll be sending out details as the one who do that, because our, our September 6th meeting is also going to be part two of our retreat. So we'll have to give some thought to when it makes the most sense to, to do that and you know, not structure it. So anyone has to be there for all four hours of that, because that's, that's a lot.
So at the high school, we're transitioning from sort of the event to occupancy. We met with the contractors we've been working with, who have been drying the basement and monitoring the air and all those kind of good things, and we're moving, we're just starting now. We started today. They're basically slowly ramping down their systems to, so we turn on our systems as well as put on the basement fans. Basically, what we're going to do is at both ends of the building, we're going to have fans that are going to be sucking out 1,200 CFM of air. That's going to be scrubbed through HEPA filters and dumping it out into the atmosphere, basically keeping the basement at negative pressure. And that's how we're going to, that's how we're going to be for probably about six months. We'll continue week to week doing air tests within the building to make sure the air is safe, but we're going to be, I can tell you, as in, having stood down there this morning or this afternoon, with all the other sort of outside equipment turned off and just the exhaust fans on, they're, they're drawing a pretty good breeze out of the building. So that's, that process has started. It should be wrapped up by the end of the week. That will allow Pure Clean to pull their generators and desiccant machines and air conditioning machines and all that and out by the end of this week. So are, they're going to set up that equipment in the basement for the long haul, for, like I say, six months, probably. We're going to basically, the areas where we're going to be exhausting air is on the backside of the stage through the through the, the, the bulkhead. Nobody ever goes back there. Like I say, everything's going through HEPA filters, so there's no concerns there. But basically, we're exhausting from the bulkhead behind the stage and then out by the cafeteria courtyard area. So we're going to, we're going to be blocking that area off so it can just sit and run and just let it do its thing over the next six months. Just so that we're perfectly comfortable with the environment down there. We have a contractor coming in, in the, in September to look, we had at one point, up until a couple of weeks ago, we had put a poly barrier. The basement is basically dirt. It's actually sand and, and stone, but it's, it's a dirt basement. The floor, there's no concrete floor. So we had in the past a poly barrier under the gym and under the auditorium. That worked really well. We'll probably do that again. The rest of the basement, we will talk with our, our industrial hygienist and talk about the pros and cons of putting another barrier down in the basement. But that'll, that'll come in the future. But we are on track for, for the start of school, and equipment is slowly starting to leave the campus. The site itself, Kyle Bale Vance and his crew have done a great job out front. Sort of shoveling off the silt and integrating what's left and aerating, and they're going to start seating. They, they still have the practice field to do out front, basically half of the practice field. As you enter the school, the field on your left, we refer to that as the practice field. About half of that's going to need to be scraped off and but we'll be able to use half of it for middle school field hockey. Matt Link has secured his work with, on University Soccer, to work with Ramon's College Fine Arts to use that field for soccer, for middle school soccer. But our game field is looking great at the high school, and the field hockey field is looking great. Tom and Kim have done a great job of aerating and rolling and aerating and rolling and all that. So it's actually, that's in pretty good shape. Our baseball field, well, Chip Stevens, who is with Diamond Tech, I call it Tech, but I think it's Diamond Turf. He works with the Mountaineers on their field and U32 on their fields. He's working with Kyle with regards to getting some grass down this fall. He will be basically prepping the baseball infield in the spring, so we can get a good season in on that. But next summer, we'll end up having to dig that out. Dig that down another five inches and put in new soil, new sand in the infield, which had happened this spring, no, last, last spring, last year. So, but that'll, that'll wait until the spring. Same thing with the softball field. We're basically bringing the grade up there to about five inches or so, and then in the spring, we'll be able to bring that clay in for the softball season. That can, they can bring that in and they can play right on that. So we're, we're, we're in good shape. We're, we're expecting that the students are going to come into the building and never know that anything happened, and we were very fortunate that the water never reached the first floor and stayed in the basement. So with regards to what the students' perception is and, and the staff, it'll be as if it never happened there. And we're all on track.
And the air testing's happening weekly as well.
Yeah, we're going to, we'll continue that throughout the year when, and the, yeah.
I named the air tester Bucky today, so it's, it's got a name and everything, but he'll come in every, every week during the, during this fall, and then probably more sporadically as things are in positive.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. Any questions for Andrew or Libby about the high school update? And again, fantastic, fantastic work in yet another, yet another unexpected and difficult crisis.
Well, one of the advantages of working in a school is contractors like working in schools. They, they see a real value in, in the ones that we've been working with. You know, You know. Brett with at at Benoit and Scott and Tanner at Johnson and Kyle Belvance and all those, they. They, they, they see the value and and appreciation of of working in schools, and they've, they've definitely stepped up. Everybody involved is is really stepped up and and Tom and his crew especially.
Fantastic.
The other schools, just so people know, this because they're gonna be of interest, uh at the high, at the elementary school, the. Um the Rye Space Bathroom's been framed out. The plumbers were in. Uh days run together, it was either yesterday or today, I don't know. Uh they were in roughing in the new bathroom up there. Um the little gym, the uh walls are sheet rocked, the ceiling is is um. Is in process, uh the 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 framing is up, the sheet rock hasn't, but. The electrical is getting, was roughed in today, fire alarms are gonna get roughed in tomorrow. Uh the auditorium unfortunately is is taking a little longer than we hoped, but I think the end results. Uh Libby's seen a couple of snapshots. I think the end results are gonna be. Well worth it. I think people are gonna be very, very pleased with that. Um Tara's doing a great job. Um it's amazing what she's been doing over there and her crew. Um floors have shined like they haven't shined in a long time and um. And uh so the cafeteria over there, if anybody's got. Kids that are in the elementary school, we took out the old clunker drop down. Tables that were chained to the wall. We got rid of that. It's all been painted. Uh unfortunately, the new floor is not, there was manufacturing delays in that, so. Uh the floor isn't down, but it's been revamped and repainted and it looks really nice, and we're putting in new uh. New lunch tables in that space, so it's gonna look great. Over at the middle school, the guidance uh suite is cranking along. Uh our ex, our contractor has. Agreed that our expectation is that on the twenty eighth, they're gonna be able to move in, but that's looking great. That's the old wood shop that's now been created into. Two offices and a and a reception area for guidance. That's gonna be uh really nice. Um and we have. At the, in the cafeteria. Uh we kind of changed the flow. We added a set of stairs to kind of keep, to improve the flow in that space, and that's. All coming together and and we'll be ready for the start of school, so um those other little projects are are cooking long as well.
Great. Questions for Andrew, and I have I have a quick one. I'm sorry if you covered it, it's over my head. Um the electrical in the high school, my understanding is that there is a temporary but but safe fix right now, and it might take a while for the permanent fix to come in. Is, do you have an update on that?
Yeah, so what has happened is um. What, the way it happened in the original is is Todd Benoit. Uh basically was working with the state inspectors and they were basically said to him is, if it's safe, if you think it's safe, it's safe with us. Um so they came in during the event, we turned, killed the power to the building for a week. They've gone through, they've made their inventory of parts and pieces. We're still. Berry and Montpelier has a a new. Code with regards to electrical equipment that it needs to be out of the floodplain. Uh when you build new. Um we've got, we've reached out, well. Our assumption is we were gonna move it ups, move it up to a, create a new electrical closet. Uh they actually told us that 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 wasn't necessary. I still have to go over and talk with. Andra and get a little clarity on what that all means and um whether it's by code or not, if it's a good idea. We're very fortunate that the area that we would need to put the electrical, we actually have space above where the existing electrical panels are, so it would actually. We're fortunate that we can basically go straight up with the stuff, but we're gonna get some clarity on that one. We've got the boilers themselves. Uh we were very fortunate in that, I think a school somewhere over in Addison had. Decommissioned a couple of their boilers, so they. The, our contractors were given these. Um uh burners, and so they had them in their warehouse, so we have one set up. Uh we we were able to retrofit that, so we actually have the the hot water's been turned back on. So we're ready to go there while we wait for our new equipment, but that should be here well before the heating season. DDC control systems, they were down there this morning, uh or this afternoon, replacing their old boards and putting in new boards. So, like I say, our expectation, my expectation is that to the. To to anybody who's not in the basement getting their hands dirty, there's, everything's up and going and um. And operational in it, it will be.
Excellent, thank you. Um. Any, any board questions for Andrew? Excellent. Um no, thanks again. We we appreciate the update. We really appreciate the hard work. And uh yeah, no, it's it's been, it's been quite an effort and uh. Uh you know, echoing, I think the comments of 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 Bridget. Yeah, it's it's really great that we are able to. Um avoid having this crop of high schoolers, have another disruptive event. In in their schooling, so we we appreciate the. The fantastic work that that you and and Libby and the custodial crew and Tom and everyone and all the contractors and everyone else who pitched in. Um has. Have done.
I I don't, I don't generally like to do this, but I think when it's all said and done, I'm gonna make a proper list of all the people and. Give it to Libby, so she can actually, in some, in some form, really truly acknowledge. Uh the people that were, that were in here doing this stuff, because there's a lot of people being pulled in a lot of directions and. For some reason, our our poll gets a little extra tug over and over in our way. And and I I credit that, I credit that to Tom, because they know when they coming in. Uh to do a project, he's gonna be standing elbow to elbow with them. All the way through. He's not, and that uh sort of sets the tone. They know that when they're coming over, it's appreciated and. We're gonna help them as hard as they're helping us, so.
You might have something to do with that, too, Andrew, just a little bit.
Tom was here before me. He set the tone before I got here.
Uh we certainly continued it and we we hugely appreciate it. It was like it's just Lynn and I left. Uh we were gonna carve out a little time for. You know, as part of our meeting on September sixth, uh. We were going to, we are going to uh have part two of our. Of our retreat, kind of building off the work that we've been doing for a while in terms of putting um. Indicators of success for our our board priorities. Lynn, if you have any questions about that that you wanna hear now, uh please do so, otherwise. Uh I think we're, Kristen is back. Otherwise, I think we are uh. Kind of at the bottom of our agenda, uh but Lynn, go ahead if you, if you, if you wanna comment on those, because I know unfortunately you are. I believe not feeling well, not able to make the retreat, so.
Yeah, I I don't have anything at this point. I I read the minutes from the retreat and. I think I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Excellent, thank you. Uh Kristen, any comments on the um. On indicators of success or anything you want. You gotta give thought to before we convene to dig into this project again on the sixth.
Yeah, other than just that, I felt like really good positive uh forward motion um occurred at our last meeting, and this definitely feels like. Just solid um ground to start the goals work in earnest, so yeah, no changes or edits.
Great, thank you. And we've done the policy, so motion to adjourn and uh do you have a motion to adjourn? Do we, do we need a motion to adjourn? We don't have a. Why do I do it anyways?
We have a core.
Yeah, we don't have a core. Marilyn, you wanna make the motion and I'll.
Sure, I move, we, we adjourn the meeting.
And Kristen, do you want a second? Because you're the only one left.
Second.
Uh all those in favor? I.
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 Great, uh. Uh thank you all. I know it was a brief meeting. Uh look forward to a a long meeting on the sixth, and obviously, you know, as we discussed earlier. Um we have quite, quite a bit to uh dig into uh this fall. And you know, there'll be, there'll be difficult discussions, but really important ones, so. You know, I was looking forward to those that I I can be. I wish, I wish we we had different circumstances, but we have circumstances we have. Um and again, uh anyone who's in the board, please uh send me a letter of interest. Including your your background and and why you wanna serve uh by the next meeting. And we will, uh we will fill that seat, and for those who've already done so, a huge thank you for being willing to step up and serve. So, thanks. See you on the sixth.